All right, I've got seven o'clock. And it looks like we have a quorum. I before I call the order, I'm going to apologize for my voice. I've been sick for over a week with a few visits to the ER. So I'm gonna suffer through this call and hopefully you all bear with my scratchy voice. And don't drive you guys nuts with it. So appreciate you hanging in. So we'll call this meeting to order of the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee for Monday, May 2. And as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. Pardon, that was in attendance. So the roll call we've got Dave, I don't see Jess.
Yes.
June.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Yes.
I don't see Mike, Randy.
Uh, yes.
Susan is not here. Tom.
Yes.
And I'm here. So that is six of us. Thank you. Our next scheduled meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School Committee will be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 16. The first part of this meeting, for any of those watching at home, is our annual organizational meeting. And that's when we go through and reelect our chair and vice chair for the upcoming year. We'll appoint a district secretary and treasurer, as well as two council positions as well. Go over some liaison appointments and talk about our meeting schedule. So we'll do that. And then that'll be followed by what'll be a normal meeting from from that point on anyway. And if anybody has any questions from the committee as we go, obviously, jump in. But first order business is since my term has ended, we need to appoint a chairperson pro temp who will just go through the logistics until we elect a another chair. So I'll need a nomination for that.
I'll nominate Craig Hanson.
I'll second.
It's a little too quick.
It's only pro temp. It's very typical.
Okay, I'll take that.
It's only a few minutes, Craig.
Thank you. I think I can do it. Um, all right. So this, any other nominations? Okay. Um, so Jess.
Yes.
June.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Susan. Oh, sorry. Not here, Tom.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So thank you all. And I see.
Craig, do we have to let Robin in? I see that she's.
He's only on the phone.
Yeah.
Oh.
So she's having some technical difficulty. She has graciously declined my invitation to promote her. So. I'll try again there, Robin. All right. And so Dave Carney has joined us as well. So next is just a welcome or more of a congratulations to Ms. McNeil, Ms. Robbins, Mr. Casey on your reelection to the committee. So welcome back. Good to have you all staying on. So look forward to another three short years. It'll be fun. All right, elections of officers. So we have obviously two positions that we normally vote on. We could take them at a time, or we can take them together. I don't have a preference. So we get to each of you. So we have chairperson and vice chair, and I will go ahead and open nominations for one or both of those positions.
I nominate Craig Hanson for chair of the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee.
And I will second that.
Any other nominations for chair? All right, any nominations for vice chair? Do you want to vote on chair first?
I think typically we've always nominated and then voted as well as there. We also vote for other more than two because we do the secretary, the treasurer and the secretary as well, as well as appoint the district council.
Yep.
It's not, it's not just two positions.
All right. So want to vote on chair? Any other nominations? All right, we'll close that. So this is for myself as chair. So Dave.
Yes.
Jess.
Yes.
June.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank everybody. I appreciate that. Nominations for vice chair.
I'll nominate June.
I will second that. Any other nominations for vice chair?
I'll nominate actually. How you like that?
I will second that.
Do we have to give speeches now?
Well, now you have to. Now it's a contested race, right? Any other nominations for vice chair? Dave want to nominate Lisa. Lisa can nominate Jess. Jess can nominate Tom.
I'm good. I'm good.
Right. June, I do you accept your nomination for vice chair?
Yes, yeah, you'll just have to talk me through it and never be absent ever.
Piece of cake.
Okay.
I think I've missed like one meeting and it was the last one. I say that coming after being sick. So Randy, do you accept the nomination for vice chair?
Yeah, I suppose I'll accept it.
All right. So I have not done this without a formal ballot vote. Any suggestions?
Yeah, I don't know.
Could we all just?
Can we send them to Brad?
Is that or we could send them Craig as well? We should all have.
Or Craig.
I don't know if I could do a poll on here. I don't see how I can do one.
Yeah, the thing is it's supposed to be a secret ballot. So we're not supposed to know what everybody else is voting until it's announced on who voted what.
Correct. Um, yeah, I'm fine if people want to either text or email. I, if you could do email, I would just prefer that from a having a record perspective, but I can save my texts as well. If people are comfortable with that, and then we will take the majority of the seven of us voting. So you're voting for June for Randy, or you're abstaining from the vote for vice chair? Those are your possible options. This, yeah, to me, I think makes sense. All right. I think I've got everybody. And with a vote of four, two, three, congratulations to June.
Congratulations.
Nice job. That was, that was a nail biter. All right. Moving on to our appointments of district treasurer and secretary. I don't know superintendent, if there's anything you want to say about recommending, we reappoint Michael Hartnett as district treasurer for the 2022, 2023 school year.
I would recommend that.
If someone would like to.
I will move that we reappoint Michael Hartnett as the district treasurer for the 2022, 2020, 2023 school year.
I will second.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? All right, Dave.
Yes.
Jess.
Yes.
June.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have the superintendent recommending the committee reappoint Rob and Iby as secretary to the school committee for the 2022, 23 school year.
So moved.
A second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on that one? All right, Dave.
Yes.
Jess.
Yes.
June.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is also unanimous. Thank you. Um, next is the appointment of district council for the 2022, 23 school year. I believe we do these separately. So the first would be Thomas J. Nuttall from the firm Sullivan and Nuttall PC for our special education council or for the district's special education council.
I'll move that we appoint Thomas J. Nuttall for our special education district council from the firm Sullivan in Nuttall PC.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, Dave.
Yep.
Jess.
Yes.
June.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is unanimous. And the last appointment for district council for the 2022, 23 school year is the firm of Valerio, Dominello and Hillman LLC for the district's labor and public education council.
So I will move that we appoint Valerio, Dominello and Hillman LLC as district council for labor and public education for the 2022, 2023 school year.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, Dave.
Yes.
Jess.
Yes.
June.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. All right. Next up is our 2022, 23 school committee or subcommittee and liaison appointments. So this past year, we've had the remnants of accelerated repair in the building committee. And then we had our finance committee, negotiation personnel, policy committee, and then we have liaisons for the equity advisory, facilities, safety, technology, the select boards, and the warrants, signatory or signatories. I guess first question I'll put out there, just from an accelerated repair and building committee, I'm going to presume we will leave those just as is, as those are winding down unless anybody has any additional details or suggestions with either of those. All right. So those two aside, does anybody have any questions or comments or discussions around changing any of the subcommittee, subcommittees themselves, not necessarily the membership? Or any of the liaison positions? And for those that were in those, I guess I'd ask if they worked, did you find value in them? And if so, great. If not, then we should probably talk about whether or not we still need certain ones moving forward.
You know, when the building committee is gonna finally be dissolved?
Any day now, right? I don't know. I don't know, Brad, if we have an update on some of their closeout work that I know we're just waiting on some. You're muted, sir.
Sorry, we actually do not at this point in time. I know we're still dealing with some, some panel issues in the, in the commons and trying to get someone to come out and take a look at it because we do have some peeling panels. The overlay is peeling on over, I believe, over 200 of them. So we are going to have that looked at. But it could be a humidification issue that's, that's causing that. But it comes down to really why was there an overlay on it in the first place, almost like a laminate as opposed to it just being a solid piece of wood? Outside of that, I do not have an update on it as to when the closeout is planned.
The sayings I saw you.
Yeah, I did. I did have a meeting today with our OPM and the MSBA about some of the closeout numbers and working on the final pro pay. So just that's all I'm reporting at this point. It's not done yet, but there was a meeting. Some parts of that got solved and there'll be more coming.
Okay.
And as far as just the other subcommittees, I would ask the people on the negotiation and personnel subcommittee how that works, working with all of the the unions in the past, it's been split between teachers and the other unions so that it wasn't as much work, you know, year round for that committee as well as at least as far as the compensation usually so go the teachers, so go the other unions. And so it's a little bit easier. Working was always used as a stepping stone to go up to the teachers, which was the larger, more difficult negotiation, just to get to common ground with them. So I just ask, how, how did that work for you, working with all of the unions?
I haven't really let anyone else jump in on that, or I can feel that. Yeah. So I mean, I would definitely say, you know, the majority of, of our time was kind of dedicated towards the teacher unit. I know we had, you know, after kind of ping ponging through the different negotiations, talked about maybe splitting splitting up and maybe returning to, you know, kind of what you suggested before Randy is as far as maybe splitting up some of the different unit work. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to do either or both again. I think you're right. To an extent, the the teachers unit kind of drove the finances for, for the others. But it seems, you know, it seemed like the other, the other units were fairly easy to settle. Once the financials were kind of locked in. So I don't necessarily see a need for it. But if others feel like, you know, there was, there was a lot to it and maybe dividing up, I'm, I'm happy either way.
Any other comments or suggestions from folks?
I kind of was in the tail end of that committee. Things are more or less winding down when I came on and I thought it was fine. I don't have any issues with it.
Right. June.
Dave, you were on the negotiation when it was split, or was it already one when you came on? I forget.
Don't recall. Um, yeah, sorry. I mean, participated in the last two teachers negotiations, but uh, or the last two contract negotiations, so.
Okay. All right. It was just a question. I, you know, I haven't been on it. I know I was on both of those negotiations, subcommittees in the past, first came on as the other unions other than teachers and then the teachers. So I'm just curious what the feel for the people doing it right now are.
June, were you going to say something?
Um, yes, not regarding that, but regarding the liaisons, I believe we also had liaison to our lunch provider. Lisa and I had a few meetings with them this year. That was another another group that we had formed last year.
I think you're right. Thank you. All right, my, my only comment, seeing no other ones is just around. I know we've tried this or we've talked about it a few times. And I know this was part of our, our committee goals. I'm not suggesting a formal subcommittee, but more of a formalized working group to look at communication. And, and I know people have heartburn with the word transparency, but, but I like it. So I'm going to use it. But a communication and transparency working group to just make sure that we are communicating in a way that's receptive to our audience. And, and I think I had some eye opening moments, this mainly this budget cycle, but I think even with some of the hot topics we had this year where, I mean, I, I had gone in because I have been doing this for a handful of years anyway, and and, and just kind of know how things work. I know how the budget gets presented. I know what some of the line items mean. But, but the public doesn't always know that. And I, and I have had been taking some of that for granted. So I'm speaking mainly for myself, but I wanted to see if others on the committee feel that, that we should take a look at some of the big ticket items that we communicate out or the big ticket asks from a community perspective and make sure whether we do again, some open discussions with folks and just make sure that the information that we're putting out is, is being consumed in a way that, that makes sense to the consumer rather than making sense mainly to us. So that's a thought of mine. I don't know if others feel the same way if that they think it's something that's needed or, or not. So June, I see your hand up.
I do like that idea. I think there's always areas to improve our communication. And I'm on board with that. And I would volunteer to be part of it as well.
Excellent. Jessica?
I also like that idea. And I too, if no one else wants to, I would also volunteer for that.
Sort of scary because the one part of my note that I did not read is that I would like Jessica June, and I put Tom as well to be part of this.
Thank you. I, I am happy to second or third June and Jess, and I would certainly join that as well.
All right.
And I was just sort of also volunteered too, but Tom, if you wanted, it's all yours.
Well, I mean, I think we I'm happy to have everybody involved and we can just make this. I mean, we can have a working group go off, maybe do some tactical things and then come back, obviously, and have the full committee. I mean, the full committee needs to be part of that discussion anyway. And it may be that, again, as we formalize this, that it's, that people can go off and have conversations with, with their constituents, with members of the public, with other boards, whatever it happens to be, to make sure that again, what we're putting out there is appropriate and being received that way. And even find other opportunities. We've talked about a number of things. I know resources haven't allowed some of that to come to fruition as much as we'd like, but I think it's gotten to a point where we've just, we've, we've just got to commit to it and get it done. So any thoughts on should this be a subcommittee? Which would limit us to for people or have it be a working group or strong opinions one way or another?
I mean, if it's it, it's really about like this, the school committees communication, right?
Correct. Yes.
So I, I mean, I don't, I don't want to shut you out, Brad, or any of the other administrative team, but like if, if it's stuff that, that we have if it's stuff that we're going to communicate out. I mean, I don't necessarily need, see a need to include administration, not to exclude them. You know, I know they have enough meetings anyways, so might, might save them a little bit.
Well, being a subcommittee doesn't doesn't mean that the administration has to be there. I was going to say, I kind of like it as a subcommittee. So that we can have up to four members on it. You can go off and figure things out either on your own, come together and then bring stuff to the full committee. For us to look at, we can direct things at you. It's not always a, all right, who can show, who won't show. It's a smaller group, which I have found on the subcommittees that I work on, that smaller group is better because it's a nice, consistent group doing all the same work.
Makes sense. All right. So I'll pause that till we come through and appoint all these. Any other questions or comments? On that or other committees or liaisons? I don't know which one that was, Tom, but does he have any good ideas?
He definitely does not stop communicating, so he might be helpful.
Awesome. Signed up. All right. So if there are no objections, we'll move on to appoint the, the various subcommittees and liaison positions. I don't know if anybody has desires to serve on any one subcommittee versus another or liaison position.
I would like to do the warrants.
All right.
Should we just speak up? Or do you want us to raise our hands?
Yeah, I could just, just speak up, I think.
Okay, I would like to do finance subcommittee and the policy again. And I've been in contact with Susan today and she would like finance if possible.
All right.
I would like to stay on policy, especially where we're talking about the regional agreement more now. And then I'd actually like to step back from equity advisory. And even though I just brought it up, the lunch group as well, I'd like to step back from, but I would like to step into the communication group. And then of course, stay on the liaison for the select board.
Excellent.
Okay. So I guess I'm next. I can stay on as the liaison for the select board of Townsend. If you would like, I would also like to stay on the negotiation committee with Tom. And yeah, that communications committee, I would also like to be a part of.
Excellent. Thank you.
Be clear, I hadn't volunteered for negotiation yet.
You know, you want to.
No, I'm kidding. I will, I will do negotiation. That's fine.
And I would like to stay on negotiations and the equity advisory.
All right. Lisa.
Um, policy, finance, the warrants, and then lunch and IT liaison, if that works out.
I am calling it food service just for, because I know they do breakfast too.
Okay, lunch or food service.
Um, for, I guess Susan's not here and Mike's not here. Just for facilities and safety that we had Susan and Mike as those, I don't, I, I don't remember hearing much about those. So I don't know if we want to kind of bypass those for now unless anyone has other knowledge.
Yeah, let's bypass them. I would say if we haven't heard anything.
Yeah, okay. Um, Tom or? Tom or Dave, were you interested in select board for Pepperell at all? No, okay.
Select board for Pepperell.
You want to do that?
Yep.
All right. All right, so if I capture this right, so we'll talk about the subcommittee chairs as well, but for finance, I've got Randy, Susan and Lisa. Lisa, you're currently the chair. Between, I guess, the two of you that are here, do you have any preference? On sharing that? Or Randy, you want to stay chair of policy? Make it easier?
Yes, I was gonna suggest that Lisa, if she want, if she's amenable to it, to stay chair.
All right.
I will with help.
Tom, you're good to stay on his negotiation. With Jessica and David.
Let's just or Dave wants wants a turn.
Now, Tom, I nominate you.
Happy to.
All right, policy, Randy is chair with June, Lisa, and I'm gonna put myself on policy. Footpath back and forth between finance and policy.
We're a tough group, Greg.
Yeah, I was gonna say Craig, and if you're not gonna join finance, is there anybody who wants to be a fourth on finance?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, that'd be good. Do we know if Will's gonna join us again?
I believe so.
Yeah, he wanted to.
Okay.
Can we always add members?
We can, yeah, we can add people as we go.
Okay.
We actually only had three this year. It was just. Lisa, yourself, Randy and I. For communication. I have June, Jessica, Tom. David, if you really want it, I will. Let you do that, or if not, then I'll do it. You had you had mentioned you had some interest, so. Is that a no? Mr. Carney?
No.
Okay. All right, in terms of chair for communication, June, just tell myself, anybody?
You don't want it? If you don't want it, I can do it.
If you don't mind doing it, I'd rather you chair a subcommittee and help me do it.
Unless Junior just wants it, I will happily do that too.
You'll you'll do it with help. All right, for liaisons, I had David for equity advisory, Lisa for food service, Lisa for technology. Select board reps would be June, Jessica and David and warrant signatory Lisa. We should probably have a. Backup Lisa on that.
Yes. I don't know if Mike wants to be the backup on it.
We can, oh, I'm. If no one objects, we can put him down and then if if he objects, we can find someone else next time.
Okay.
Because I know he I think he's the primary now, right? You guys are.
Yeah, we're just we're just gonna flip.
Perfect, okay.
I'm saying not attending the organizational meeting usually means you get put on things without your. Acceptance. It's just the way.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Like it. All right, well, then I in that vein, I'll leave. We'll leave Susan on facilities and Mike on safety, just. Just because, okay, so. If folks are okay with this, I'll read down the list and we can do this as one motion unless I see any head nods subjecting. All right, so for this will be, I'll take a motion to appoint. A finance subcommittee with Lisa as chair, Randy, Susan as members. Negotiation and personnel subcommittee, Tom as chair, Jessica and David as members. Policy subcommittee with Randy as chair, June, Lisa and myself as members. The communication subcommittee with Tom as chair, with June, Jessica and myself as members. Equity Equity Advisory Liaison with David. Facilities liaison, Susan, Food Service Liaison, Lisa. Safety liaison, Mike. Select Board Liaisons for Ashby is June, Townsend is Jessica, Pepperell is David. Technology Liaison, Lisa. Warrant signatory, the primary is Lisa and the backup is Mike.
So moved.
All right.
Can I just make one addition is for the finance having Will Hackler as the citizen member?
Yes. Thank you. All right, any last minute questions, comments on the appointments? Okay, so Dave.
Yes.
Jess.
Yes.
June.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So those all pass. Thank you all for sitting through that. The next thing we had is the proposal for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school committee meeting schedule. Which should be in the. In the packet or in the. Organizational meeting folder. I know we generally look at this and and say it looks fine and we obviously move dates around. As different things come up throughout the year, but if anybody has any objections or questions on dates right now. We can certainly talk about it. Otherwise, we'll just move to accept this this schedule. And again, for members of the public. These are not set in stone dates. There's always something that comes up that may require an additional meeting. Or require us to perhaps delay a meeting just due to specific agenda topics and the the readiness of materials for that. So I'll put that caveat out there, but. If folks are good, I'll take a I'll take a motion.
I will move to accept the school committee calendar as is.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All right, in honor of Susan, I'm gonna go backwards, Tom.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
June.
Yeah.
Jess.
Yes.
And Dave.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you. All right, that concludes our. Organizational meeting. We'll move on to the regular part of our meeting and the consent agenda where we have approval minutes, payable warrants, payroll warrants. Series of donations and an out of state field trip.
You go for a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Look at that to David. All right, so Tom.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
June.
Yeah.
Jess.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, that's unanimous. Thank you. I did not see any public communications that. Came in for this evening's meeting. So we'll move on to our, I see Randy has a hand up.
Yeah, I just I want to say I have. I have no problems doing a regular meeting attached to our organizational meeting this year. But I do want, in case everybody didn't realize it, is typically we do not do any kind of regular business. Part of it is because if we have new members. They really haven't had a chance to even come on board and understand what's going on. And then having to vote on business is quite a lot. This year, I know that there are some pressing issues that we really needed to meet for. And the fact that luckily, everybody who went for reelection got the reelection, so we don't have any new members. So I have no objections to this portion of the meeting here, but just wanted to put it on record. That I'd like to try and keep it to an organizational meeting for next year, if possible.
Okay, I think that's a good point about. New members who would have had. All of a few days to to get sworn in everything. So thank you for that. Although I don't think we've tried to remember since. With COVID in the middle, I think we've always tried to jam stuff in, which is again, I think probably practice we should get back out of. All right, reports and information. I don't have anything more than what I've already communicated. I don't know. I think Charlie is on. So we'll have our student representative say a few words if he so desires.
Hello.
Good evening.
We can, thanks for being here.
All right, hello, everyone. Um, let's see, I'll keep this short and simple. There is a lot happening right now, though. I mean, it's it's AP testing season that starts tomorrow for me, so that that'll be fun. This week is a teacher appreciation week at the high school. And this morning, we had a big breakfast for all the teachers. I believe we brought them all sorts of things. That was sponsored by the student council. So that's the thing they're doing right now. In a few weeks on Memorial Day for our big. District-wide Memorial Day celebration, which will take place on the turf at the high school. We're working hard at that, the student council is, so that'll be great. This past weekend, we had the big school musical. Which went incredibly, a lot of got rave reviews from everyone, so that went great. And let's see, last thing tomorrow, we have a talent show at the high school sponsored by the Giving Tree. So that that should be fun. I I'm facing off against our history teacher, Mr. Sullivan in a drum off. So that should be fun. Yes. Other than that, let's see, I think that's it for now. Yeah, all right, thank you.
Awesome. I see a couple of hands have have gone up for you. Randy, is your hand still up from before? All right, June.
Yes, I just want to give a huge shout out to everyone who had any participation. In the musicals this weekend because it was unbelievable. It was just phenomenal. The talent of these kids is just, it blows me away. And we, my family loves like going to theater events. We go to Theater at the Mount a lot and. Every year at the high school, I'm like, it it just blows me away that these high school kids. Can perform like this and I I think they're better than the college kids, honestly, so. It's just really, really amazing group, so.
Thank you.
Send that back if everyone a shout out, we were.
I will, yeah, we appreciate you. It was a really fun thing, yeah.
Thank you, June, Lisa.
Charlie, I also have to give you a shout out because you did an excellent job. You were excellent in the play. And the group performed really well. I also have to give a shout out to the cancer awareness event that happened at. NM or at the high school. It was awesome. It was well attended and the sports teams represented as well. I even had people come up from Lunenburg, which was participating and thanked us for having the event, so it was great. So I like the participate participation of everyone. It was a great weekend at NM.
Right, thank you, Lisa. Mr. Carney.
Yeah, just good luck on those tests this week. I know they're tough, but you guys are well prepared and you're gonna do your best and we all believe in you and we're proud of you. Have a good one.
All right, thank you.
All right. Charlie, thank you very much. I appreciate you you joining, especially on a testing eve, so.
Thanks, Charlie. Good luck tomorrow.
Take care. Great, thank you. All right. Superintendent Morgan, for your reports, sir.
I did my reports on the budget.
All right.
So.
Okay, so moving on to old business, we had. The petition for the reinstatement of middle school foreign language that we've, I think, talked about our last couple of meetings. There's been some discussion back and forth with town clerks, with legal counsel. And there's, long story short. Petition of this nature, there's no requirement that. We certify signatures. It's not, so it's not a requirement. And what what I would propose at this point, there's. Six hundred and twenty-one signatures that were presented and that represents almost seven point zero zero exactly. Percentage of the registered voters, so I think even if there's a handful. That that ended up not being certified, I don't think it would change the weight or the significance of. The petition or causes to take a separate action. So I'd ask that the committee move to vote to accept the petition for the reinstatement of middle school foreign languages valid without certification signatures.
So moved.
Ooh, second.
All right. Any discussions on that? Questions, concerns? All right, seeing none, we'll go down the list, so Dave.
Yes.
Jess.
Yes.
June.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is unanimous, thank you. All right, next up is the FY. Ready to have a question?
Yeah, so we've accepted the petition and the last time we had asked the. Administration to come back with a full explanation of how the program is working this year, which we got. Where do we go from here as far as the committee, as far as getting back to the people of the petition? I think we should have some sort of resolution, at least in part, on where we're going with this.
I I don't have it in. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe we said that we would be getting back. To everyone that next spring, I believe it's next spring. Once we have a little bit, you know, a more of a group that has taken the foreign language class. The the online version and then getting back to the coming back to the committee after finding out how it went. How it looks and is it something that we want to continue with? Because obviously, again, we're gonna continue to have those challenges, like we're gonna have challenges just hiring. Teachers this year, never mind foreign language teachers, there's gonna be a lot of competition out there. So I do think that it's something that we need to explore. Look at the benefits of potentially providing students with an online class, which most kids, probably all kids, will have to take at some point in time if they are college bound. And then also look to see what other languages students can take through this program. To see if it's something that takes off or not, and then obviously look at whether or not it outweighs the value of the former middle school program. But it would entail likely some sort of a schedule change if that were to happen because STEM has gone in, essentially gone in and has replaced it.
Have we gotten back to the original petitioners who brought this forward to us with the plan? Or is there, should the chair or should the administration get back to them? Just to kind of close the loop on that.
I I'm not sure if Nancy communicated something out to them or not. I know that when we discussed it, the the creators of the petition. Just as far as an overall plan, we're at the last meeting. When we discussed again, whether it be next spring or the spring after, I do not recall. I have it. I have it in my office. As far as the time, but we can certainly put something together more formal if the committee would like that.
Yeah, I I think we need to. I mean, going back to the communication piece, just be a little deliberate in terms of. What is, what are those milestones, both from a outward communication perspective, but also. Like, maybe not. How how are we measuring the program? And I I don't mean how we how are we determining if it's successful, but what are those measures? That say. That would allow us to say that this this is more or less. That say, um, that would allow us to say that this, this, this is more or less successful, or preparing kids more or less. Than, than in-person Spanish or in-person foreign language. Just, again, just so it's very clear, and we're not waiting two springs from now to, to say, oh, you know, well, this wasn't a success now, what do we do, now what do we do? Because I think that'll be important, I. I think it's about the outcomes, right, I mean, if, wha- whatever, if it's online, in-person, hybrid, um. You'd have them go buy a book at a bookstore, like, whatever the method is, if that's able to prepare the kids for where they need to be. To get to the level they need to be at for high school foreign language, is that success, maybe it is, maybe it's not, but I think we need to define that.
Sure.
Um, and be clear with the petitioners that, hey, here's. Here's the plan, here's how we're gonna measure it, and we'll communicate updates. Whatever, once a quarter, once, twice a year, whatever it happens to be. Because I think enrollment numbers are gonna be important to that as well. If we get ten kids to sign up, is that success, even if they all get straight A's?
Right.
Or is it success, if we get fifty kids to sign up, and half of them get straight A's, and half of them struggle with a C, is that still success of the program, I don't, again, I don't know. But I think that, that has to be weighed in there, because. I know some of the folks were concerned about just exposure to foreign language, not necessarily. Being ready to take, uh. Advanced high school Spanish class.
Sure, okay, I can discuss that with Nancy.
Okay. Anything else on the foreign language piece? All right. Onto the budget.
Thank you, so, again, um, y- you know, a- as far as the district goes, I do feel we have tried to be as transparent and responsive as possible. The, th- this budget has, for all intents and purposes, been shared, uh, as, as far back as is November initially. Um, we had our first budget summit in October, we had one in November, January, December and January. And it, it is very, very difficult to put together a, a budget without knowing what the member districts need. And what their needs are, I, and what their budget looks like. Uh, in past years, w- we've had a pretty good idea, is, is to what the member towns' budgets were looking like and what they needed. This year, we received one budget from the three towns, and we received that budget in early April. Uh, so it's, again, very, very difficult to know what the towns are looking for, that being said. We do know that our first town meeting coming up, Townsend, on, uh, tomorrow evening, actually. Um, is struggling, uh, and that our current, uh, the current two point eight eight percent increase. Is going to be a struggle to get passed. So, Central Office met last week, and we did try to come up with a plan, and we do have a proposal this evening. Um, that would essentially take our two point eight eight percent budget increase and decrease it by three hundred thousand dollars. Which would then make it a two point three seven percent increase, which is the lowest, um, budget increase proposal. That I have seen in recent years, and again, the goal going into this is to try to keep it close to three, um, for the school district. Because it is a challenge to keep up with all the mandates that we have, to keep up with the challenging curriculum, to hire a talented staff. It's a very, very difficult thing to do, um, especially when we have, um, y- you know. Things that are beyond our control, such as transportation and healthcare, that far exceed two point three seven percent, or two point eight eight percent, or three percent for that matter. So, a- again, w- what we're looking to do is, um, we're asking the school committee to consider a revote on our, on our budget. To take us from what the original was in March of a two point eight eight percent increase, down to a two point three seven percent increase, and we've arrived at that. By reducing the district-wide elementary school teacher that we had in, um, almost as a contingency. Um, should class size, um, get to be too high, it does look as though we are going to have a contingency teacher regardless, just because. Of, um, that the way Ashby is shaking out, looking right now like they're going to go from seven classrooms to six, due to class size. Um, reducing the ask of the two point O adjustment counselors to one point O. Um, w- with the plan of making it a two point O the following year, so higher half of that position. Of those, but ha- higher half of the FTEs this year, a point five at Spalding and a point five at Barnum Brook. For FY twenty-three, and then an FY twenty-four, propose that they become one point O, one point O, so do half of it this year, half of it next year. That would give us some savings, reduce the additional technology technician. Um, and, and then we have some additional monies, um, that's probably best explained, um, by Nancy Haynes. That would, again, get us down to a two point three seven percent increase over FY twenty-two, and a three hundred thousand dollar savings. I do think it's going to, um, get Townsend, uh, to, to a better spot. Um, to hopefully, um, y- get them in a situation where they can support the budget, but right now, the, the assessments are for, for Pepperell. At two point three seven, the assessments would be two point four four percent for Pepperell, two point six six percent for Townsend. And Ashby would still be very high at ten point one six percent, because of the, because of the shift in students. So, I, I am recommending that the school committee support this, um, and that we revote on the FY twenty-three budget. This evening, in time for tomorrow night's, um, first town meeting in Townsend, and then we have Ashby coming up Saturday and Pepperell on Monday.
Randy, do you have your hand up, or is that?
I think it was from before, but I actually was about to put it up when I noticed. Um, first, I'd like to commend, uh, the administration for looking at this and finding things, um. Uh, I think it's just been a very difficult, uh, time for, um, a lot of towns and a lot of, uh. A lot of organizations, um. The only concern I have, um, for this year is the school adjustment counselor. We're dealing with an awful lot, if you look at the national news across the US, across the world. Um, these students, especially the youngest ones, are having the hardest time, um, with coming off a remote. Um, and everything else that's been happening, um, I, I worry that putting off that extra full-time, uh, position. Whether it's, you know, half and half between Barnum Brook and Spalding, is not good for the students, whereas all the other cuts. Um, you know, I, I can see us struggling and trying to fit it in, um, and making do, uh, without the technology technician. We can figure that out, if there isn't a direct, um, effect on the students. Where's the adjustment counselor, if we don't have enough adjustment counselors for these students to help them through these difficult times. It's going to directly affect their learning, and this is a position that we typically have. Um, put off in past years, um, and kicked down the line for many, many years, we've cut these positions. It's very difficult to get back once we don't put it in the budget. I'd be in favor for everything else except for that position.
Thank you, Randy, Tom.
Yeah, I'm with, I'm with Randy, I, you know, I was actually really excited when I saw the, the two ads, um, for the adjustment counselors and. Um, so just looking at that and, and just knowing what, you know, what schools are, are dealing with right now, um. You know, it was something that I was super excited about, for the, the position, so we're reducing it to a point five point five, are. Are you anticipating hiring somebody as a one point O in splitting time, or hiring two point fives?
It, it would be, uh, it would be one person, a split between the buildings. Now, n- now, a- again, i- if, if this is something, a- and I agree, um, w- we actually got our first report. From Care Solus, the, um, the, the new, um, the new program that we are using, and it is being used. At a pretty high rate, um, I wanna say we've had five hundred, um. Inquiries in the first month, and I can provide the committee wi- with that information, and that does provide, um, support for students and parents. That being said, um, you know, th- there's certainly a workaround into keeping those two positions. And that would be making sure that we stay within budget for, um, any new positions that we are hiring. So I, I, I guess what I'm saying is, is that I'm, I'm still confident that we can make this reduction. E- even if it meant maintaining the two school adjustment counselors, but we would have to be very cautious. On, with, on hiring.
So just for new positions, you wouldn't go over, you know, a master's plus whatever, or years of experience, or whatever.
Well, we would have to be very cautious, and again, but we would, we have to look at, um, shifting money from some of the other funds that are.
Did he freeze for everyone, or is that just me thing?
Any other comments for anybody? Before we, see if we can come back.
If I can just share, um, I went to the, um, Townsend FinCom meeting earlier, uh, this evening. Uh, and attended that, as well as took a look at, um, the Townsend budget, uh, talking with Ross Perry. They have their deficit down to, I think it was fifty thousand and something, and change. Um, is where they're at, at this moment, um, so this reduction more than, um. Helps Townsend, uh, with their budget issues, um, I was gonna make a suggestion this evening, um, that we take a formal vote. That any additional money that we receive from the state, uh, through the senate or anywhere else, that we, for this year, pledged. That that will go towards town assessments versus raising our budget, or putting it into our E and D, uh, it's typically our, um. What we do anyway, but, um, you know, if we have a formal vote this year, so that towns can be confident that we're going to do that. I think that would be good, um, I'll let Brad, I see him back, uh, if he can finish, uh, what he was saying before. Um, about, uh, the budget.
Sure, so can someone tell me where I left off, because it looked like everyone else froze, and I was still talking. So I, I, I don't know what you heard and what you did not hear.
Uh, so, last year, you had just mentioned, um, you know, just being cautious about hiring practices moving forward.
Yeah, so a- a- again, i- i- it is doable, w- we, I, we just have to be, w- w- we certainly have to be careful. That's all, um, you know, th- th- there are certainly, there are certainly ways i- in which we can be cautious. Certainly, w- w- with the hiring piece, to make sure that we maintain both positions. I, I, I guess one of the pieces, um, one of the reasons I was, I, I was proposing it. Was to be fully transparent with the towns now, in that we're asking for half, we're asking for one this year. But we, we're going to tell you now, we're going to need the two for FY twenty-four. So we're gonna reduce it this year, but we're gonna ask for the two positions in FY twenty-four. Um, just to, you know, to do it partially for this year, but there's certainly. W- we can certainly do our very best to make it happen, maintaining both positions. And just making sure that we're certainly cautious with any vacancies that we have in the district, and how we go about hiring, and we, we generally are anyway. Um, but w- we would have to be cautious this year to make sure, uh, that we're coming in at that number, Nancy, do you have any? Um, initial concerns? With that thought process? You're muted.
All right, terrible, um, we may end up with some retirees that we don't know about right now. Um, I think I heard there was potentially one, um, so those, those types of things obviously affect. Um, the ability to maybe fit something else in the budget, but, I mean, we could keep, keep everyone updated. Um, as we go through the process, this, you know, as the hires are made, and as we get settled positions, and, um, that type of thing.
I, I guess the other piece of this is that, a- again, I, I would still ask the committees, support the three hundred thousand dollar reduction. A two point three seven percent increase, um, but also realize that we may not be able to find. Two school adjustment counselors. Um, it's, it's, it's a different license than a guidance counselor, um, and there are far more guidance counselors out there than there are school adjustment counselors. So it's, it is, it can be a difficult position to fill, um, and it's not something that we just wanna fill, just, uh. Just to fill it, we wanna make sure that the, that we have competent people in those roles, so that they're actually gonna provide the best possible service to our students as possible. So, I, I guess, again, bottom line is, is that I'm still confident that we can get the two, to get to the two three seven, reduce the three hundred thousand dollars. And maintain both of those positions, provided we're careful elsewhere, and I'll be meeting with the admin team on Wednesday anyway, so that would be the plan. Is that, um, we would have to be cautious from a budget standpoint on all new hires.
Lisa?
Um, if the budget, budget does not go through. Um, severe cuts, is that what we're looking at? Or?
If, if the budget does not go through, yes, we'd be potentially looking at, um, so- some significant cuts, what that, what that looks like, I, I honestly don't know. Um, but it would likely be, um, th- there would likely be cuts, the, the other pieces, the, the other component of this. Which is why w- we're certainly pushing to make this happen in advance of, um. In advance of tomorrow evening, is it is really holding up our ability to post for jobs. Because if we do have to cut, um, we don't wanna start interviewing and offering people jobs and offering them contracts if we have to actually. Reduce, because if we're gonna reduce, it's likely going to be in areas where there are vacancies. Uh, and, and tha- that's not something, a- again, not something that I want to do, I'd like to, I'd like to think a two three seven would get us through. Um, our class sizes are, are, are getting to a point where they are high. Um, and I'd like to see them not go any higher, e- especially, a- at the elementary level, especially, uh, in some of the grade levels. Were right around, um, twenty-five to twenty-seven, at several grade levels at, at a couple of our schools, so we wanna be, we wanna be cautious of that. So confident we can get there, just, um. Would like your support in the budget, so that we can potentially present some, some good news to Townsend tomorrow evening.
Randy, do you have something else?
Yeah, um. I can support the three hundred thousand, um, but I would really like to take that, um. Adjustment counselor off of the table and find it other, other places.
Okay, I can do that. I will do that.
I guess, for me, not to belabor this point, but, um. With this reduction, the overall assessment for Townsend, which includes the debt assessment. Is only going, I was, is going up one point two nine percent, Pepperell's is zero point five eight percent, and Ashby unfortunately is still nine. Point three five. I just, I have issues when other areas of the town's budgets continue to go up, well above two and a half percent. And they're still balking at the school district for coming in at what is now less than one point three. And I, I've yet to get answers from. Certain people within Townsend anyway, and I've asked a question, um, and Ashby still. Certain people within Townsend anyway, and I've asked a question in Ashby, still I don't get, don't get answered, I don't get anything. So that continues to be a bothersome sticking point. For me, I want to do, we kind of help the towns, but not at the expense of the services that our students need in this district. So that continues to be my concern. Jessica.
I'm watching the meeting of the mock town meeting a week or so ago that's on YouTube now. I think that people are just going to blame the school, no matter what we do, no matter how much we go up or we don't go up. I think that they're still got this mentality that. It's the school and the school is always asking for money and. So I don't know, I, I still think it's an uphill battle for tomorrow night, honestly, in my opinion.
I think part of that's. And I've, I've worked through this in Purple to some extent, but I know it's, I've seen it with some of the conversations in Townsend. Is that they see this as part of their budget and it's not. Like, yeah, we're all going after the same taxpayer dollars, but we need to work together to go after those same taxpayer dollars.
I mean, I, I guess, I guess the problem is, is that if the budget doesn't pass. It's, I would say it's very likely we're going to be looking at class sizes of thirty.
Well, the budget can still go up. That's the risk that towns take.
Right.
And I think if they didn't pass it, I would push very hard for them to explain. Why you support a town budget going up at whatever it's at now. I don't have Townsend's latest numbers, but it was five percent as of last week. Why you're supporting that, but you're not supporting a school budget going up one point three when everything costs more money. Toilet paper costs more money than it did a year ago. Hand soap. Waxing the floor, I mean, everything costs more, so. Like, tell me your grocery bill hasn't gone up by more than one percent and you're asking a school to contain its cost that much.
With all the cuts that they've made, Townsend got their budget down below two point five percent.
Okay, well then there should be no problem with a one point three school.
Right, um, FinCom did not have any issue that I heard as far as the school committee assessment. The board of selectmen was not recommending the school assessment, but that was before they cut the budget. Down to the only having fifty five thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars that they had to cover. That wasn't in balance that at that point it was three hundred and fifty two or more, I forget the exact amount. And with that amount, they weren't supporting it. I would hope that they would support it between their cuts. And in anything that we do here.
So, thank you, Randy. June?
So I know there's a lot of focus on whether Townsend is going to support the budget or not, but the. I know some of you know, but I don't know if everybody knows, but Ashby had opted to put a lower number. Into their budget line. By about almost three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars less than. Than what the school budget is currently. So. So unless somebody makes a motion to change that during town meeting. Then the school budget as we have it would not be approved. I don't know if you want to do any public comment, but our town administrator is on the call right now. So she may be able to further elaborate that, but I do think it may end up posing an issue. So it kind of, you know, if Ashley does not vote the full amount, then it's really kind of hinging on whether Townsend will or will not be.
So they, just for clarity for the rest of the committee, they, they changed the warrant that we'd submitted on their own?
The select board voted to do that during the meeting.
Do they have the authority to do that?
Yeah. Is that legal?
It is, it's non-binding. Just because they vote in a number doesn't mean that we are bound by what they have put in. We can still request the same amount that we are requesting from them. If Townsend and Pepperell support the budget as is, then it doesn't really make a difference. What Ashby votes, they could vote, you know, zero, they can vote three dollars or they can vote the lower number that they have on their warrant. And it would not apply. It's the same way it's always been every year. Two of the three towns vote the budget, the third town has to accept it. It's just the way it is, it's the way that everything works. But they are certainly in their right to vote in a lower number. I believe what would happen is if Townsend does not pass it. Ashby and Ashley passes a lower number, that's essentially saying a no to the assessment we have. If we come back with another vote for a reduced budget. There's a possibility that we might meet whatever number Ashby originally voted, but again, it's non-binding.
So how does that work on the floor of? Town meeting, like when we. I guess present our motion for our, our assessment. Do we just say the correct number?
Don't know, I'm not sure I've ever been in a town meeting when we've done this. And I don't, we don't always present either. We. Because the education assessment, if I remember correctly, is part of the budget. And it kind of goes through it, at least in Townsend, it's just one of another line in their budget. We don't have a warrant article for it.
Yeah, it's not supposed to be, it's its own thing. We assess. Directly. Which has been my whole heartburn with this process is it's not, it's not a line item in the town budget. Miss Haynes, see if your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to say that not all the towns voted the same way. You know, Pearl does it in sections like, you know, I mean, you know, general government, you know, police, fire, safety, education. The town of Ashby, I believe, votes the bottom line. And people can make motion to make changes to that, but they do usually do it as one vote. Townsend, I think, zip in sections also. Oh, I guess just as far as the comment, if, if we get so that, if we get. Two towns that don't approve the budget, the school committee has thirty days to re, relook at the budget. They can make, they need to make a change to it, whether it's significant change or minor change. And then they would re- adopt a budget and the towns would then have forty five days to respond. So they'll be going back to town meeting, which I know kind of it's not ideal, but that's how it works and it would. Our, our school committee would likely adopt that before June thirty so that we can utilize the E and D. That's certified for next year's budget. So that's just a procedural thing. So I don't. I don't know how that's going to look for the towns. I'm sure they're not. I don't know if they maybe don't know that they have to go back that quickly. But that could happen.
And how much does a town meeting cost? Does anybody know? All right, Lisa.
If one of the towns does approve it. The way it is, do they have to recall a town meeting? Or conduct another town meeting?
I don't believe they do. They've already met the assessment. And, and what would, what could happen is they would approve a higher number than what our final number is, as an example. And then they would be able to say move money later in special town meeting or something, but they, they would have approved the budget number, at least. And be slightly over potentially.
All right, anybody else with any questions or comments?
I guess a motion, I will move. That. Looking, sorry, I'm looking for the.
Randy, I have the.
Okay.
I move that we. Approve the, or a budget for the FY twenty three. Operating budget of fifty three million. Two hundred and six thousand, six hundred and twenty one. Did I get that number right? Is someone checking? Nancy? A transportation budget of three million. Nine hundred and eighty two thousand, eight hundred and fifty nine dollars. And a debt service of three million. Nine hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and seventy two. Using E and D of two million, six hundred and forty five thousand.
And Lisa, you got it right. The operating is fifty, fifty three million, two hundred and sixty one thousand, six hundred and twenty two dollars.
I got that one right. Did I say it right? Okay.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Any last questions, comments? So again, this represents a three hundred thousand dollar decrease. Bringing the overall change from FY twenty two to two point three seven percent. Nancy?
Yes, so the other change in this budget is that we are using the chapter seventy numbers that the house just came out with. And reduce, they reduced the amount of charter school reimbursement. But they also reduced the assessments, so the assessments changed slightly and we're, we're using the not, not the state. Budget yet, but the house version of it, which was an increase for us. The original budget had only a thirty dollar per student increase in chapter seventy. And this is a sixty dollar per student increase. So try not to spend it all in one place. But, you know, that it, every little bit helps, I suppose. So we, it moves on to the senate now. The senate will review it. And decide, you know, what those numbers will look like. So it's, we're hedging our bets that those will come in. As we plan, hopefully they won't be any major changes from that, but we won't probably know the answer to that till July or so.
Excellent, thank you, Nancy. All right, any other questions or comments before we vote? All right, Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
June? Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I guess I will vote yes. So that passes. Thank you, everybody.
I would like to also just make a motion that the school committee commit for the FY twenty three budget. Any additional revenues we receive that are not in our current budget from this. Or any current revenues that we don't have in our budget currently that we put towards town assessments for next year.
I will second.
All right, any questions or comments on that?
What would that, what would that do to? I don't know, excess and deficiency, like what would that do overall to our budget, I guess?
It shouldn't do anything, anything more than what we have just voted. It just if, if the state, if the senate votes in higher amounts that we don't have in our budget right now. Then that just simply goes to town assessments. We don't increase our budget by that amount, that money, money, money coming in just goes to town assessment, reducing those.
You, you will have to revote, re-adopt the budget again to take advantage of those revenue sources.
I'm just. I'm worried about these class sizes. I'm worried about these numbers and. You know, it seems like every year we're kind of eking by and it's getting. You know, these class sizes are getting bigger and bigger every single year. A class size of twenty seven, class size thirty. Is really bad for kids. You know, we can talk about remote learning, but when kids are in class and. There's, there's one kid, or there's one educator for, for twenty eight, thirty kids. That's not a quality education either. And I understand the town budgets are really tight, but. I'm worried about scraping every last thing we can possibly get off of the budget. Yeah. Yeah, I'm really worried about that. And I'm barely in support of this budget right now with where class sizes are at.
Anybody else questions or comments? My only concern, Nancy, I think we're at. Where we're bottom, what was our unanticipated revenues this past year that went into E and D? Was it about a million? In that range or?
I think it was in that range.
Okay, so I guess I worry if we have that much. Again, unanticipated revenue. This year, then that doesn't go back to E and D, right? Is that where I'm saying?
I think it depends on how, how it comes in. Some of that is, if it were school choice as an example. I mean, you'll have to decide this, the committee, it'll all have to come back to the committee anyway. So I guess, I guess you could have. You, your issue, I think, will be that you. If the towns have already set their tax rate, reducing it doesn't really, all it does is give them back, they've already figured out a way to set their tax rate and balance their budget by. You know, December. If it comes in after December, it's a little harder for them to utilize it. It would go into, it would probably be a reduction in the third and fourth quarter payments. And then they would have, it would be in free cash. And again, they can't really utilize it. Until they have a town meeting that way either. So it's, I guess it's the kind of thing that you'd want to come back to. You'd come back to the committee, look at what the revenues are. And, and again, I don't, I think, I think the intention is that if the state revenues come in more, so chapter seventy, chapter seventy one. You know, if we have more interest income that comes in, we're not, we're not balancing our actual revenues to the. To reset assessments mid-year, especially past December. But if we know something happened in the fall, we'll be able to make the change. And vote a new budget and then the towns would have the option of approving that budget.
No, that, that makes sense for me. Thank you.
I can certainly amend my motion that any additional state revenue. That, that we, that comes in before the October one. Date, I believe that's when we usually recertify Nancy, is when we have October one numbers.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, in order for them to be able to, I guess, I guess if it's a lower number, they don't need to revote. So they, if they've already approved a budget at that point. Usually try to do it ahead of the town meetings if there's a fall town meeting. So I don't know what those dates are right now, but. Okay, that, that way they can utilize the funds for setting their tax rate. If you don't do it before then, you, they really can't.
Okay.
I think, I think, I think they need it. But, but maybe not. If, if they're fine to just have it get, go into their free cash and they are not setting their tax rate with it. It probably doesn't matter when it is.
Then here's the modification I'll make is. And we'll modify the motion to any new revenue from the state. Of from the senate's approved budget. That's not currently in our budget now. We will put towards. Reducing assessments. Uh, reducing assessments. So this way, you know, we have an end date when the, when this, when the state sets their budget.
Or or the, or the final adopted state budget. If there's any change, we'll reuse it, and what what could happen is it could be a small amount, which is, um. Kind of frustrating because it doesn't really help anything and requires us. Re-adopt the budget, reissue all the letters. Um, and then there's, there's very little change at all, that that's typically what's happened. Um, last year was the first year that we did readopted, I think we did that in the fall for the transportation increase. Um, but often it's not that, often sometimes that state budget goes up, but other things that they're charging us for go up also. So it's, um. As long as you're re-looking at the whole picture, so like in this case, the state, but the most recent budget from the House, the chapter seventy numbers went up. The charter school went down significantly. And the top, the assessments to the towns went down. Um, but often they can just reverse, so they could, Senate might come back and say, no, no, we're gonna have more charged. And in the state assessments, we're gonna give them less chapter seventy or give them more checks, so they they go back and forth with these numbers.
So obviously, this is a much more complicated, uh, motion than I thought it would be.
I think.
It's not your fault.
I think you could, um, you're you're fine to say, based on the state budget process, um, if those numbers change, this will come here, we'll revisit it. That way you can look at all the changes and when the final budget comes through, usually it's July. Around July, mid-July, so maybe at the July meeting, we would have an update, potential. Revote if there was any new revenue to take advantage of at that point.
Okay, we'll make this simple, Craig. My new motion. Will be, um, that the school committee will pledge to, uh, look at the budget. Uh, for any potential reduction in town assessments after the state certifies their budget.
I'll second.
All right.
That sound reasonable to everybody?
School committee will pledge to look at the budget for any potential town assessment reductions after receiving the state certified budget. Is that close?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that one? All right, seeing none, um, Dave?
None.
Uh, Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that passes, thank you. Um, all right, anything else on the budget? Okay, subcommittee reports, um, Lisa, anything from Accelerate Repair?
We're getting closer.
A light at the end of the tunnel?
Hmm, maybe soon, Nancy says, yes, soon.
There ought to be a light shining through the new roofs we've got, so hopefully.
Not that kind of, we don't want that coming down.
We talked about building committee earlier, finance, Lisa? Anything else?
No, we've discussed enough tonight about finance.
Perfect, no negotiations, Tom? Perfect, Randy policy?
Uh, this, just one policy for a first reading, I do apologize, uh, to the subcommittee members, this is slightly different than what we had voted. Um, I had got gotten back with Catherine on this one, who had brought it to us in the first place to look at the changes. And I had misunderstood something that she, uh, changed, that she was talking about, that MASC had something. Uh, that we needed in here, so I changed this to the MASC version, which took out. The really controversial stuff from our policy, added in the comment that we added in. Um, during our school committee or our subcommittee meeting. Um, and this is, uh, the one that's being presented for first reading, uh, which is JLCD administering medicines to students. So I move that we approve JLCD administering administering medicines to students for first reading.
All right, thank you, June. Any, uh, questions on this one? All right, seeing none, um, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Any other business? Not reasonably anticipated in the last forty-eight hours?
No.
All right, Dave, do you have something?
Yeah, uh, so it is, um, as our student representative. Uh, mentioned, it is, uh, Teacher Appreciation Week, and I would just really like to thank all of the, uh, North Middlesex teachers for all that they've done the last. Uh, not just this last school year, but the last few school years, they've really, um, put in a tremendous effort and. Uh, their work should be recognized.
Hundred percent, thank you, Dave. Um, just one item for, uh, our upcoming agenda, I would like to, um. Just as a committee revisit our school committee norms and operating protocols, so we can run through those, um, in our next meeting. But if folks get a chance beforehand, just take a look, make sure they're still relevant, resonate, make sense, um, if anybody wants any changes or anything made to those. Um, we admittedly have not been doing a great job kind of reviewing those on a regular basis, but, um. Hopefully they do kind of serve as the foundation for how we operate and conduct our business, so people could, uh, could take a look at that, that would be great. Um, and then the other plug is, um, I believe all of us on the committee and and obviously those in the community are welcome as well. That, uh, Nistatisit is doing a performance of Willy Wonka Junior. On May fifth is their opening night, um, and they've got some in-school performances on the sixth, where the final performance. The evening of May sixth, so that is coming up later this week. Maybe it'll give Beauty and the Beast of the High School Run for its money, so encourage folks to, uh, to get out and and check that show out as well. All right, anything else before a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Perfect. All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so we're adjourned, thanks, everybody, have a good night, I really appreciate it.
You.
Thank you.
Bye.